Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231. According to the Open Public Meeting Act, this meeting of July 23, 2025, was published in the Bergen Record and Herald News on January 8, 2025, was sent to our town. The executive session meeting notice was published in the Bergen Record and Herald News on July 16, 2025. In addition, copies of said notice are and have been available to the public in our office in the township clerk. Roll call, please.
Committee Woman Apici?
Here.
Committee Woman Artola?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Here.
Committee Man Trubinski will be absent today. Mayor, um, Mayor George Carvello?
Here. Okay. So we have Resolution 25-24, our authorization to enter into executive session, may I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committee Woman Apici?
Yes.
Committee Woman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Carvello?
Yes.
Okay, we'll leave that. Someone else. Thank you. Call to order, may I have a motion to come out of a closed session?
Motion.
May I have a second? Roll call, please.
Committee Woman Apici?
Yes.
Committee Woman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Committee Woman Trubinski will be absent. Mayor George Carvello?
Yes. Okay, I just want to let you know that Mr. Trubinski is away on vacation, so he won't be here. He's in Iceland. He has skills and weapons. So, good for him. I just hope he has a wonderful time. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come in the silence. Thank you for being here this evening. All right, the first thing on the agenda is the Proclamation for National Emergency Management Awareness Month. So, let me get everything here. And... Okay. Anybody else wants to come up? I have Serpia. We have members of Serpia. We have...
Before you do, if it's okay, the mayor, this mayor is going to need the proclamation. Just so you know, emergency management is not just an individual or one entity, one department effort. It's a team effort and requires a lot of coordination and a lot of help from not only internally, but also externally. We're fortunate enough in Rochelle Park to have a pretty dedicated team. So, the proclamation, although it is a National Emergency Management Month, it's really all of us that make up the emergency management team. So, it's all possible, if you want.
Absolutely. No, no.
It includes you, it includes our administrator, our police chief.
What? The other one, Serpia?
Yeah.
I have to take the picture.
And before you do, Ron, Ron Davis, and then back when he was a police captain and also, um, dear minister, thank you, was also part of that team. So, I'm glad you were in the open, come up with us, you know, currently, you work on...
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have everybody. Thank you everyone for coming. With who?
We're good. Yeah, no, we're good.
Sam, you're on, Serpia?
No, he's okay. He's, yeah, he's okay.
Okay, I just want to, everybody wants to be included. Do you want, somebody else to take the picture, Michaela, because I know you're on.
No, why don't...
Are you sure?
Sam, could you take the picture?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, all right.
Apparently, you're part of the team.
Okay, so this is a proclamation for the National Emergency Management Awareness Month, August 2025. Whereas emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly, posing significant threats to life, property, and the environment, whereas local emergency managers, emergency managements across all sectors, community and leaders, state government, and federal emergency management agencies, which is FEMA, dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs to protect the lives and property of all persons living in the United States and the U.S. territories. Whereas emergency managers across the United States and U.S. territories are charged with establishing and maintaining capabilities necessary to efficiently direct, coordinate, support, emergency, and disaster response, and recovery. And whereas the mission areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, are you okay? Response, recovery aligned with the core capacity is identified in the national security goal. And whereas the emergency managers serve the nation by responding to countless emergencies and disasters each year, demonstrating commitment, compassion, and professionalism to protecting the public, and whereas the efforts of our nation's emergency managers have helped millions of community members across the United States recover, rebuild, and become more resilient in the face of adversity. Now, therefore, be resolved, I, the Mayor Theresa George Carvello, and the Township Committee, Township of Rochelle Park, hereby proclaim August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month in Rochelle Park, and in conjunction with the support of the International Association of Emergency Managers and the National Emergency Management Association, I urge all residents of Rochelle Park's community members to express their sincere appreciation for emergency managers in every sector, preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation, who work diligently to prepare, protect, and serve our residents against all hazards and risks dated the 23rd day of July, 1925. Thank you very much. Very, very much. Thank you. You, Alwa?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Officer Christopher Kiska. Christopher, Officer Kiska.
Chris, why don't you come on up? But as you're doing that, I just want to say, you know, the efforts of our emergency managers, both with Pete, Kenny Stapleton, of most recent, but the work through Sal has done in the past, has actually trickled down over the last five years to the Police Department, to the point where we actually created an emergency operations plan to deal with the nightmare of the repaving of Rochelle Avenue. But through those coordination efforts learned from our emergency managers, it made the duties of Lieutenant Ramirez, Lieutenant Stapleton, and the six other Rochelle Park officers there much more productive, to the point where we're able to help a dialysis patient get in and out of her home to get some treatment without problems. So, with that, thank you again to our emergency managers for all they do. But this award is a recognition of excellence award, and it's basically a 39 colon 4-50 award. It's presented to Officer Kiska of our Police Department. Officer Kiska was responsible for 12 of the 36 DWI arrests made in Rochelle Park last year. He's one of about 56 officers in Bergen County and one of about only 450 officers statewide being recognized with this award. I'm very proud of his efforts. Chris continues to lead the department in proactivity, self-initiated activities, arrests, and this is just another fine example. I know his dad is here and his wife, his lovely wife, so thank you for coming. And Mayor, I have the certificate if you'd like to present it to Chris, and I also have a PIN. And again, this is provided by the mothers against drunk driving, and it's something I do statewide. So, again, Chris, thank you for your efforts in keeping the town safe.
The Pledge of Excellence Award, 39, colon, 4-50, presented to Police Officer Christopher Kiska, Rochelle Park Police Department, for outstanding dedication and support for your efforts in, 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 right, in, 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 in,[642.29][642.29][S01) in, 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 in,[654.29]
Quite, it can hold quite a bit so far. And thank you again, Mrs. Rahassell for doing this, we appreciate it. Okay, all right, let's move on. Sue, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes of this special meeting, June 5th, executive session, June 5th, public session, June 25th, and executive session, June 25th of 2025?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Cavello?
Yes.
So now it's the approval agenda, and there's an addition to this agenda. And this will be on resolution, we're just going to walk this on under a resolution. And this resolution number will be 25-219, correct? Okay, so we're going to add this on now, it's not in the packet that we have here. Counselor, would you like to explain a little bit about this?
Sure. As part of the redevelopment agreement and plan, the township committee agreed on behalf of the developer to utilize its eminent domain powers to acquire an easement from AT&amp;T for the development site. As part of that agreement, the developer had to pay for all of the development in downtown as well as, of course, the value of the easement. So the matter was scheduled for trial, and prior to the trial, a settlement was entered into establishing what the cost was going to be to the developer for the purchase of this easement, and disagreement sets forth the terms of that settlement. But again, I want to emphasize that all the costs associated with this redevelopment process was paid and as well as will be paid by the developer.
Very good. So that will be added to the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as so amended?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Cavello?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you. All right, so we're going to do a couple of reports, your administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Just some updates as to Howard Avenue. The second part of Howard Avenue from Patton Court through Harvey Avenue, the work has begun, and just to clarify again, Mayor, and to the public, that was a second bid job because it was a second grant. We were able to move a CDBG grant over to that portion of Howard Avenue, it was not part of the original DOT grant that did Howard from James to Patton. We are progressing rapidly, as always, there's always a hiccup, hidden utilities and people's driveway aprons, but we've since remedied some of those. But again, on both projects, the trees that are all part of each of these projects, which we'll talk about a little bit, our green streets, but trees were added to this project as well as the original Howard Avenue, we're going to hold off to September, October, for obvious reasons, trees grow better in the cooler months, require less watering from our residents and from our TPW team, and it's just a higher chance of survival. Something I brought up to the mayor's attention, and I would like to discuss here so everybody knows, that bid came in way under what the original proposal from our, from Neglia Engineering was handling that one at the time, and based on that, and based on the fact that both sets of vendors have used Patton Court kind of as the storage ground for gravel, dirt, removal, debris, I think it's only fair to the residents of Patton Court that we include the milling and paving of Patton Court, and I have Neglia working on obtaining quotes for that, and if we have to go to bid, we will. But I just think it makes sense, again, those residents put up with a lot, and to not benefit from a simple paving of that small street, I mean, it's, you know, it's probably one of the smaller courts in town as well. That's an update for that. I did walk Burdan Street the other day with Boswell Engineering, again, it's another NJDOT grant, with Dave Brown, as well going over necessary curving, sidewalk, driveway apron, ADA ramp, you know, mandatory ADA ramp replacements, as well as talking about adding some speed calming devices, as well as another rapid beacon flash and crosswalk at the intersection of Theme and Chestnut, I'm sorry, Theme and Burdan, for obvious reasons, that being that's one of the main access points to Carlock Field, it only aid in our campers staying safe, as well as all of our youth and family members that have to walk into the park. So again, all that's preliminary, we look, you know, the survey is done, Boswell drew up the plans, we're looking at a, probably a late fall bid with a winter-spring project, which I'd like to do for these because most vendors are looking for work in the cooler months, so usually we see some better pricing. Summer concert, Mr. Kavalsik, former committeeman Jay Kavalsik reached out to me not too long ago, maybe two to three weeks ago, to say, hey, Park Avenue BMW is very interested in kind of doing their last and final summer concert, we want to go out with a Big Bang, it's going to be a well-known band, it's going to cost a lot of money, but they're going to pay for everything, if you can obtain the field permits and the stage for me. So I've done that, and the date, unfortunately for us, Mayor, is August 27th, that's the date of our meeting, but that's the date, the only date that the band was, there was two bands they were looking at, and both bands were only available on that date. So the summer concert is scheduled for August 27th, I don't know which band was picked yet, but again, I've been in contact with the city of Hackensack to secure the showmobile, as well as, I already obtained the necessary permits executed from the school actually today. I was able to reach out to Verizon, I'd learned of a free Wi-Fi and free basic TV program that they offer municipal governments. Unfortunately, our only facility that currently has access to the Verizon FiOS is Matthews Field, I did look into trying to get it at our Lot's Lane EMS and OEM facility, unfortunately, that section of Rochelle Avenue has yet to have FiOS, they pretty much stopped at Windsor Court and stopped at Sacred Heart Church, so hopefully I asked their engineering to start running it, but we'll see what happens there, but that's scheduled for tomorrow between 1:00 and 3:00, so Matthews Field House, as we've talked about, I know Mr. Miller brought it up to me a few months ago, Tommy, it wasn't on me, this is Verizon's calendar, but it looks to be happening tomorrow. And lastly, as you all see before you, we were able to get our roof bid, and again, I'm very pleased to say that that bid came in approximately four, gosh, almost $500, half a million dollars less than what was originally proposed, so a lot of debt we won't have to incur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make a couple of comments. First off, thank you to Mr. Troinsky for helping out with that roof project, I mean, without his guidance, I don't know if it would have come in at that bid, but he was able to work with everyone to see if well it could come in at that cost.
He definitely brought the newer technology to the forefront that both the engineer was, you know, astounded to learn of and look at and find that it's definitely viable, and obviously going to work for us.
So, and the second thing is that the concert, the concert's on the 27th. So, John, what would you recommend, or would you like?
I think the concert starts at the same time as our meeting, we're going to move the meeting's date.
So would you be interested in moving our meeting date?
I think we could do that.
Yeah? I'm looking at the attorney to see when he is available. So, November 27th. When are you opening?
The week before.
I'm waiting on 13th.
13th?
I can send somebody else from my office.
When do you go, when do you go, John, when do you leave?
The 15th.
The 15th?
Yeah. And I come back on the 26th.
Tommy?
I'm good for 26th.
We can only move it up. So what time's the concert, 7:30, right? Oh, 7?
Yeah, we take, we say 6:00 to 9:00, but that's obviously allows for about an hour set up, so 7 o'clock is typically the start time.
So what time can people be in here, if you want to move it up earlier?
I'm here.
Oh, yeah. I don't know, John, can you?
I'll leave work for the rest.
Okay, so it's 5:00? Okay.
I think you do that, yeah.
I'm asking everybody, so let's look at then the 27th. Hang on, let me get that. So it's, of course, this agenda is always subject to change, but we're going to do August 27th at 5:00 p.m. And the 5:00 p.m. would be closed session, or would it be, we have to be here a little earlier for that?
Let's hold ourselves to a short standard of closed session.
We can do probably a half hour closed session if we're here at 4:30, because I knew, you know, in case there's litigation, any other questions that are a legal matter we have to discuss. So you want to just start closed session then at 4:30, open to public at 5:00, right? We'll make it, okay. Okay, so that's 4:30 p.m. Everyone's good with that, that's all right?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, excuse me, yes. All right, I'm sorry, now the next one is committee reports. So, does anyone want to go first? Sure, thanks.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, for recreation, summer camp is in full swing, and the campers are thoroughly enjoying all the new amenities at Carlock Field and Houghton Hall. As a reminder, for the safety and well-being of our campers, we ask everyone to please not go to the park over there until 4:30 went closes. Softball League kicked off this past Sunday with a great turnout and overwhelming positive feedback from the participants. Recreation extended to be seared, thanks to the generous sponsors who made this program possible. TDK Designs, On the Clock Diner, Maestro Pizza, Sam's Hot Babes, Rigley's Busy Bee, and Big Pack Hobby Shop. They've all sponsored this, so the taxpayers did not have to pay, and we have, I think there was 38 people who signed up for this one, so it's very good so far. Our final movie, Under the Stars, for the season will be Thursday, August 1st, at Carlock Field, they'll be showing Wicked, it's going to start approximately at 8:30 around dusk, bring your blanket and lawn chairs, and Recreation will be providing popcorn for the attendees. Razorback registration is now open, please visit the social media pages and for the signup link, the registration deadline is August 8th, and practices will begin starting the first week of September. The new, they're going to be forming a new 12U Royals team, tryouts will be scheduled for next week, details will be shared on the Recreation social page. Congratulations to our current 12U team for their impressive 9-3 win over Dumont in the first round of playoffs at Matthews Field last night. Tonight, they're competing in the semifinal game in Hawthorne. If they win tonight, they win the championship title in the suburban summer league, so let's wish them all the best. Summer concert, we discussed, would be Tuesday, August 27th. We're hoping that it will not be the final, we're pleading with Park Ave to not make it the final concert. Bacheball League signups will be starting mid-August and will run September through October. Recreation's going to be hosting their first fall festival, which will be Friday, September 20th, with a rain date of Saturday, the 21st, and details will be announced on social media. And then we kindly just ask residents to help us protect our parks, if you see any concerning activity at Matthews Field or Carlock Field, please contact the police desk to report it. For the veterans, Post 170 is hosting its annual family picnic on Friday, September 27th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and all are welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Really, the building department, but it's not that much. Building Department, for the month of June, they issued 21 permits, 85 UCC inspections were completed, the total value of construction is $169,000, $154,000, a total of $5,834 in fees were collected, $50,000 of UCC penalties for 120, we waived $125 in fees, one lane inspection was completed, 49 maintenance violations were issued, 78 complaints, and 93 inspections were completed. Total fees collected for the month were $58,559. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Sure. Happy summer, Rochelle Park. The Fire Department responded to 35 calls for the month of June, accessed for all pastor bylaws at their recent meeting, and hosted a wonderful meet and greet with their committee, and they will be at National Night Out on August 5th. The library is hosting a tie-dye chalk art and bubble party on August 16th at 1:00 p.m. Access for All will also be in attendance as well, and I also want to give a special shout-out to Diane Rahassell for arranging the welcome bags for new residents in town, it was such a thoughtful way to make new residents feel welcome and at home in our community. And that's all for me, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The court report, the court report for the month of June is as follows, traffic, 529, criminal, 44, total of $17,709.36. Traffic tickets are up by 130 compared to last month. Thank you to all our court colleagues and to our police for their hard work this month. Details were already given about this, but I would like to say that last week, the Township Committee received an email from Chief Pinto concerning the call that Sergeant La Boy attended to, the person involved was experiencing severe behavioral crisis. Chief also informed us that he is committed to getting every officer trained or certified by the crisis intervention team in Bergen County. In my response to the email, I thanked Chief for making this training a priority. I also complimented Sergeant La Boy, stating that he has the amazing ability to be tough when the situation calls for it, and he also has a gentle, genuine demeanor. I did not know that Officer Sean Zenick were involved with that, so thank you both for your work in this, and thank you, Chief, for the work that your entire team does to keep us safe. That's all.
Okay, great, thank you. So let's start off with the police report, during the month of June, the team answered 1,497 calls for service, responded to patrol division, and detectives continue to demonstrate good productivity in seeking out criminal activity before it impacts our residents and stakeholders. The extra effort dedication and output demonstrated by the 258 motor vehicle stops, seven arrests, 14 criminal charges, and 629 summonses issued in the month of June alone. In June, the police officers are also involved in community participation outreach programs, including Rochelle Park Day, Recreation Movie Night, Rochelle Park Royal Baseball Game, and assisted with traffic at the middle and school eighth grade graduation ceremonies. They continue, the entire department continues to complete their mandatory firearm qualifications. Patrol Officer Kiska had a five-day CIT, which is Crisis Intervention Training. Patrol Officer Lamas had four days of driving while under the influence standard field sobriety testing training. On the administrative side, they continue the training of the newest full-time dispatcher, we have a new full-time dispatcher, and she should be ready on her own in mid-July, to go on her own. The seniors will meet again in September, but there are two trips that are being looked at and coming up to be planned, so if you're interested, please reach out to Marie at REE5141 at yahoo.com. The first trip is September 17th to Wind Creek, the second trip is to Atlantic City to see Tony Danza, so she needs to know, you know, a little bit ahead of time and have the ticket set aside and all that. Congratulations again to OEM and CERT for the National Emergency Management Awareness Month, and everything, we're continuing to move forward with all of this, and I cannot say enough about our police officers, our CERT team, our emergency management, our recreation, everybody's pulling it together, and we're doing a terrific job in Rochelle Park, and it's being recognized in many places, thank everyone for doing that. And now we can move forward with the rest. Okay? Anybody else have any questions or comments? Perfect. All right, so down to the new business, we have an appointment of Recreation Committee member, which is Andrew Mattson, I would be appointing him to the rec, I think that fills rec right now with the amount of people there. Appointment of Access for All Committee member, Lisa Hoffman, she's with the library, she wants to be part of the Access for All as an executive and helping with it. Rochelle Park Complete and Green Streets, Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Tonight, there's a resolution on the consent agenda for a complete and green streets policy, and this is ultimately about our future, creating safer streets with green infrastructure for stormwater absorption. Since this year started, we've heard a lot about pedestrian concerns and safety during public comments. After the positive reception to the June 11th presentation on complete and green streets, and our engineers' recommendation for it, this policy is going forward because it makes sense for our community. Complete and green streets ensures that every new road project we undertake considers flood mitigation and safety improvements, when cost-effective and appropriate for each street. More importantly, it unlocks grant opportunities currently not available to us. Towns with complete and green streets policies get extra points on grant applications, qualify for safe routes to school, gold status, and it allows municipalities to earn sustainable Jersey points for beautification grants. Last year, the New Jersey Department of Transportation gave out $161 million to 543 towns for municipal aid grants. The 173 towns with complete streets policies got $66.7 million, the other 370 towns split the rest. Think about that, one-third of the towns that had complete and green streets policy, they got nearly half the money. This policy gives us the opportunity to demonstrate that Rochelle Park is willing to lead by example and set the standard for smart infrastructure investments. Ultimately, this is about flood protection, safety, and greater potential for grant money, and I look forward to voting yes on it tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Miller, you did a lot of research on it, we had a presentation here, I believe it was two meetings ago, right, and it was a wonderful presentation by Chris, and it is on the agenda for approval of the resolution, by resolution, I'm sorry. There's two things I'd like to say, I've had residents approach me about wanting to help out and volunteer with creating events in honor of commemorative celebrations that have happened with each corresponding month this year. So right now, I'm looking to set up an ad hoc committee titled Culture Affairs, inclusive activity and celebration, so if anybody's interested in volunteering, please submit a volunteer form, and we can explore forming this ad hoc committee if you'd like to be interested in doing it. We do have our flag presentations that go up, and there's a lot of times you want to look at a celebration, or just a little something to do that, and if you're interested, let me know, or anybody else in the public gets. Second thing I'd like to discuss is, I'm going to be honest with you, I worked pretty hard in the last couple of months prior to June, because that's when the state budget comes out. I got a call on June 30th, and I was working with the Assembly and the Senate and Congress trying to get funding for Rochelle Park, and it's for looking for the pump station because unfortunately, we lost our FEMA, which was 2.1.9 million, I'm sorry, almost 2 million. And then, you know, working with them, they said, well, Theresa, what number are you looking for? And I said, a million dollars. And I got a call on June 30th at 6:00 p.m., that Rochelle Park will be receiving from the state, $1 million toward a pump station. So, it was exciting, and it's very exciting, we do have a little bit of paperwork, I understand we have to fill out, but we'll be following up on it. This is excellent news, it is the first time in history that anybody can remember, unless somebody else can remember it, that we got that kind of money from the state. We got any money really from the state, I think we got $100,000 at one time, was that last year I did that one too? Okay, but, you know, throwing a million dollars and getting it back, well, a lot of towns around us didn't get that much if anything, so the state gives us money, and that money we don't have to bond for, we don't have to, you know, grant, it's not, it's given to us for us to use, and this will then go toward the pump station because we need this fixed, and we need it fixed right away. So I will ask Assembly Swain and Tully to come maybe to our next meeting, or the meet, not next meeting because we have a concert, but maybe in September, to give them a very much thank you because they really helped with this, they helped push it through, they probably got tired of my phone calls, and I was a little bit, you know, we need it, we have to get it, so I pushed for it, and luckily we did get it, so I want to thank them, and for all their help, also Congressman Lagana, right Congressman, Senate, right, Lagana, Lisa Swain, Poe, and Chris Tully, and all of the people that helped us get, we appreciate everything you could do for Rochelle Park. So, that's what I have left here. Now, well, the next business is open to the public, may I have a motion to open to public?
Make the motion.
You have a second?
Before we move forward?
Oh, yes.
Can we talk about this?
Which one is that?
The green streets?
Sure, we can do that.
Can we have this discussion, or do you want to do it after?
We can do it now if you want to.
Okay.
Hold off on opening to public right now. Please, go ahead.
So, what cost would this be for the township?
Well, if you read the resolution on the consent agenda, it's only up to 20% on the road project. If it goes beyond 20%, it's completely exempt, we don't have to adhere to any of the accommodations.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify, so it is up to 20%?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that was my only question, I just wanted the cost.
Up to, not at to, up to, so it could be 10%, 5%, whatever it is.
Right, so there's flexibility in that? Okay.
Absolutely, and I definitely recommend reading the resolution because there is a list of exemptions where unfortunately it might not work out, we might not be able to accommodate complete and green streets, but I think it's worth it to try because again, why leave money on the table, why leave grant money outside of Rochelle Park, it could really help with our infrastructure and beautify our town.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Anybody else? Okay, then let's go back to motion to open to public, I would, okay, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call again, I'm sorry.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Cavello?
Yes.
All right, we're open to public, anybody?
Okay, each resident just please state your name and the town in which you reside, you're limited to three minutes unless at the mayor's discretion she wishes to extend the time, I will try to give you a heads-up when you have 30 seconds.
Okay, I appreciate it. My name is Adam Dar, some of you know me from the jewelry store, Eli Adams Jewelers, I'm their owner, we're located on 114 Essex Street in Rochelle Park, also we own the property sale Hammer Realty. I'm going to read out, I wrote some notes for you guys, I'm going to read some information on you, whether you agree or not, but it does dearly hurt us as a business and owner.
Yeah, I was going to say, can you make that?
As always, owner of the building. So again, I'm going to start again, my name is Adam Dar, owner of Eli Adams Jewelers, located 114 Essex Street, Rochelle Park, and a property owner under Sale Hammer Realty. I have proudly operated my business and contributed to the township since 2009. I'm here tonight to raise serious concerns regarding the ongoing disruption and property damaged caused by the construction project adjacent to our site, that's located at 2 Midland Street. This activity has affected not only our private property, but also the Midland Avenue extension, over which we have held a formal easement since 1980s. Despite the bought easement, the area has been continuously blocked, obstructed, and damaged due to construction and related traffic. Heavy construction vehicles, including large tractor trailers and equipment haulers, have repeatedly entered our private property without permission, blocked access to Essex Street and Midland, and obstructed tenant and customer parking. I personally installed new asphalt a few years ago and recently paid out of pocket to repair it, only for it to be damaged again within three days by unauthorized truck activity. At one point, an excavator trespassed onto my property and used it to dig holes on the neighboring site, destroying asphalt in the process, this is a blatant violation of property rights. They also have made U-turns on my property, destroyed parking stops and curbs, and this has been documented with police reports, and we have made over 200 calls to our police department. Construction vehicles and equipment have been offloaded on our property, causing additional damage, our business, our tenants' businesses, and even Harley-Davidson next door have suffered losing countless business hours and customer access, the financial impact is massive. My tenants and customers have lost access to designated parking, directly affecting operations across multiple businesses. I want to sincerely thank Dean Pinto, who has been very helpful and responsive throughout the situation. However, the property owner responsible for the adjacent construction has repeatedly ignored our clear and documented requests to stop using our property for parking, staging, and equipment access. I have also placed over 200 calls to the Rochelle Park Police Department, while the department has responded, their hands are tied, the situation continues without resolution.
Very soon. Go ahead.
Every single call I make takes time away from our officers, and each interaction takes roughly an hour from my own time, properly document the issue, speak to responding officer, follow-up, my time is valuable, this has created an ongoing distraction from my ability to run my business. If construction was planned, was properly reviewed and approved, it is important to note that it did not include the use of private property, nor an agreement allowing repeating trespassing, equipment staging, or damage. As it stands, we have shouldered the cost of repairs and disruption without consent or compensation. At this point, we respectfully ask the township to clarify, who will be responsible for repaving the Midland Avenue extension and restoring damage caused by ongoing construction? the Midland Avenue extension and restoring damage caused by ongoing construction? As a longstanding property and business owner in Rochelle Park, we believe it's only fair that this matter be addressed promptly and transparently. We're proud to be a part of Rochelle Park, but we're also entitled to basic respect for our rights, property, and business. I respectfully urge this council to take immediate decisive action, whether through enforcement, dedicated oversight, or legal action, but this must stop now. Our patience has been exhausted. I'm sorry I exceeded my time, but...
That's okay, I allowed it, okay.
I appreciate that.
Is that ready? You want me to?
Sure, absolutely. I'm all ears.
Hi, Eli. I believe I already spoke. I have been at a couple of activities with rec at Matthews Field, and I parked along the fence line there. And one of the times, I was walking out the back where they had the tent for access for all, I was walking out the back, and it was full of mud, and I almost took a header myself. Well, I made a phone call real quick, and I spoke to our administrator chief, and I was very upset, because it's a mess, it was a mess. Now, chief, what ended up happening?
I reached out to the developer, and within, you know, hours, it was remedied. But to Mr. Dar's point, this is an ongoing issue, the construction officials very aware of it. I just, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, spoke again with the developer and said, you know, this, his name happens to be Adam as well. I said, it's unacceptable, we can't keep continuing. And they said, well, I can't schedule my deliveries for when they're going to show up, so we're going to have to do a better job. So the police department continues to go. We actually proactively now don't wait for Adam's calls. We check the parking lot several times, actually. Employees of Boswell Engineering unfortunately suffered summonses for illegally parking, not knowing that that's who they were, but nonetheless, they don't belong in that parking lot either. We continue, you know, to enforce the current ordinances about the parking in the parking lot. If there is damage to the street, I'm sure there's some legal recourse the township will be able to take, Mrs. Cutino, against the developer.
Sure.
If we can, you know, show by using Google Maps before and after, and that's, you know, pretty much how it works. But Adam knows, I mean, he has my personal phone number, so we constantly talk.
Dean has been great. I can tell you, our officers has been great. We have a great police department. We're very thankful to have them. Dean additionally, you know, he's dedicated his time to this. We don't really need to dedicate or take everyone's time with this project. I mean, they have fifteen dump trucks going in and out at one point. It's very, like, it blocks traffic, but they're making their U-turns on my property. I literally fixed the asphalt, and I can assure you, they cracked it, they dumped, they brought an excavator down, cracked my whole asphalt. Again, literally just happened, three days after it happened. So we understand, construction must continue, but if they have a construction plan, they could have left an area where their trucks can go in, go out, but they took out all the dirt, so they have literally no space for any truck to go in and out. So it creates a problem in the street, Harold Davidson access is blocked, my tenants can't get out. I get probably five to six phone calls a day, just from my tenants. And it's damaging my business as a property owner, as a Sale Hammer Realty, but also as Eli Adams Jewelers, because I can't run it. Like, I have to spend an hour just to make a phone call. An officer comes in, I talk to them, they go out, great guys, but I'm wasting their time. I feel it, I feel that I'm wasting their time, but I don't want to. Like, I feel like this has to stop. They have to have either an area designated for them to go in, and they pave that area, and then their trucks go in there. It can't be on the street. They can't have a tractor trailer with eighteen wheels going inside and blocking literally half the street. They can't make U-turns, because there is no U-turn place. So they use my properties to make U-turns. How is that acceptable? I'm paying one hundred thousand dollars in property taxes as Sale Hammer Realty, one hundred thousand dollars to face this. I made over two hundred phone calls. It's not fair. It's not fair. I'm not asking for pity, or I'm not asking for anything. I'm just asking for you to, guys, reason out. This is, I'm here, I never come to disturb anybody. I don't want anybody to be disturbed. I do my business, everybody knows me, I'm a very fair, very honest guy. I'm going to continue to be that way, I'm never going to change, but I don't want people taking advantage of us. This guy is taking advantage of my goodness, my brother's goodness, Harold Davidson's goodness. It's not fair to us. We're here since two thousand and nine. Any one of you hurt us, do anything bad, or damaged the reputation of the town? Never. We only do good things. Dean will administer and tell you, we have, we serve over one hundred seventy-eight police departments in New Jersey, state police, Port Authority, all these people come to us for one reason, we've been honest and straight. This guy is not.
I understand your frustration, Adam. I do appreciate you coming here.
Thank you.
I have been aware of it also, I believe other residents have also, because that's town parking on the side there by Matthews Field, and we have events there. That's where I end up, you know, parking a truck over there. It's easy for me to park it.
Yeah.
And end up in mud, and I know that's been cleaned up a little bit. I need this to be addressed further, Chief Administrator. I want something, I believe, any legal ramifications or recourse?
Well, anytime a vehicle goes on the property, it could possibly result in a sudden violation of the police department, there's some type of violation, but fortunately, I have to say to you, you know, that's a, the contractor isn't under our authority. I mean, obviously, it sounds like you have a civil suit against him for all the damages he's doing to your property, but the town can't get involved with that.
Yeah.
All we can do is attempt to prevent him from going on your property if there's any summonses that could be issued for that.
There are, Mrs. Cutino, and actually, the ordinance actually blocks out that that property owner can use the property. It's township property, but the easement allows him to use it between eight and four, eight and six?
Between six, nine P. M., eight P. M. to six P. M., yes, sir.
Are you talking about?
Eight A. M. to six P. M.
Yeah, the Midland Avenue Extension.
It's for the sole purpose of parking for that office building, and then it becomes back to the township. So officers have been issuing for that violation. And again, I'm going to notify the Burton County Soil Commissioner, I'll do that through Mr. DeMarie as well, to make sure that, you said they removed a lot of soil, they're pretty strict about that, so we'll make sure that we follow up. And I did speak with Mr., anytime Mr. Dar calls me, I call Mr. DeMarie, and he goes down there and he contacts the engineer for the town side to say, let's make sure that everything's being done right. But like Mrs. Cutino says, they have to take deliveries, but civil suit's probably a great option for you.
I mean, I would love to go with that option, but I also would like to tell you that if there's, the tractor trailers cannot go into the properties. They can't park on the Midland Avenue extension. I don't know what else to do to stop it. They need to have an area designated for their trucks. If they don't have it, then this construction should stop. They should red tape this, because they're doing it at our expense. So I don't, I don't, I don't see a reason why there should be fifteen dump trucks going into the street and blocking it. If they don't have access, they don't have a parking area to accept those trucks, they shouldn't have them, so...
Adam, I understand your frustration.
Yeah.
You would have to file action to stop them to come on your property. You literally would have to file that with your council. As per my council here, we can do what we can do. I know that the chief said and administrator that we were giving out summonses.
Yeah.
And it is unfair. It is totally unfair, and it is improper, and I have experienced that area too. So what we, what we can do is, I know, Chief, you can go further with any kind of summonses that we can issue if necessary, but I understand your frustration. We'll try our best to do whatever we can.
I appreciate that.
Our building official will go out there too.
Yeah.
As he said, with the soil, we will do that too, whatever we can do to help.
So my last question would be, if they destroy this parking, and I have been maintaining it for years, right, so I've been there since two thousand and nine.
Which parking are we?
We're talking about the Midland Avenue Extension, the easement. I'm not even talking about my own personal property.
The town owns it?
Yes, yes, the town owns it. So the town property is being destroyed. Does that fall on me to sue? So that's what I'm, that was one of my first questions. So if Midland Avenue Extension, the whole construction is allowed by Rochelle Park, construction has been approved by Rochelle Park, the owner of the property hasn't maintained the proper construction requirements. So does that fall on me to repave this, because he's destroying the property, it's at my expense that I have to do this?
No, no, the public property is our responsibility, and I would suggest to our building department, if they are not, he should do an estimate of the damage, and he should make him post whatever that cost is, and if he refuses to do so, he should issue a stop work order until he does, because we don't want to have to chase him for the money to make the repairs after he's done with the work. Obviously, we're not going to do any repair work until the project is completed.
No problem.
But we should make sure that the necessary money is in place to make the repairs, and again, we have that ability for our property.
This is what I'm asking for. I mean, this, I just don't want the burden on my expense, because this guy is destroying town property. My property is a civil.
We understand.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much, I appreciate everything.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Hi, Eli. Mrs. Verhassel? Oh, Mr. Warren?
Hello, Michael Warren, one eighty-one West Oldest Street. Just a couple of things. One, I want to thank the police who came to the Team Rochelle Park Pride event. It was great to have them stop by, be part of the fun and celebration, the families loved it. It was very nice of them to come by and take some pictures. I just didn't get their names, to be honest, I was running around, but please, thank them, you know, for coming by and supporting it, it was really very nice of them. The pump station grant, the one million, was that a grant or was that in the budget?
That's in the budget.
Yeah, and you called those people?
I did.
I know, I've been on the receiving end of your phone calls, and I would definitely be like, all right, Theresa, yes, okay, but thanks for doing that. Very cool. Now, I understand it was a grant though, from the federal government? Did that go through or not?
The grant that we had for the pump station was one point nine, and unfortunately, government took it back and canceled it, so we were back up to over the four hundred million. So this will help bring it down a little bit, you know, to three and change.
Okay, that's disappointing. Thanks for the information on that, so, and thank everybody else on the Township Committee for their efforts as well. The completing green streets, thanks for the big talk up. There is a, I think I gave out the policy to you guys back in early twenty-four. I know it's sitting in the office by some of the papers by the window, if you want to read more about it, or read about, you know, how to implement it. So I'm excited for you guys to vote on that tonight. I have one last thing, it's not great, but Shetree Commission time. Back in May, I sent a letter from the Shetree Commission to the property owner of one sixty-one West Busag Street, right here. And you can see from the Google Maps, they have these parking spots with no safety barriers at all, nowhere near it. We want to plant a tree, or two trees, along the easement there. A lot of residents stand outside while their kids do the Taekwondo, and sometimes they're in the middle of the sun, so we thought about planting a tree there. So there's these parking spots that kind of circle the building, they're not even like, you know, in the Milan parking lot where they're all kind of partitioned a certain way. Spoke to the owner, Ed Lozara. Do you know that Ed doesn't live in Rochelle Park? What a surprise. Do you know where Ed lives? He's in Florida. And Ed doesn't really come around to check on his property, because he said, what parking spots, Michael? And I said, these, if you go on Google Maps. Oh, well, they came with the building. Great, I said, can you send us any paperwork for that? Well, my daughter's an attorney. Good, then she knows what a Shetree Commission does, so she should have no problem getting us the paperwork. We have not heard back from Ed since May, and he has not sent us any paperwork that says these spots were either part of the title, or granted through a variance to the zoning board at some point in the history. I did have some emails asking about what to do next. I got some different answers. One from the building department that, well, Mike, it's probably a pre-existing, non-conforming building, and that's just the way it is. Well, I don't accept that answer. Mrs. Cutino, you were on the email, you said, send a violation, get them in, ask them why they don't have what they have, ask them to produce the documents. Dean, you're on those emails, what is it that the Township Committee wishes to do? Because I don't know what to do, I'm getting two different answers about how to address these spots, which are, to me, I mean, if you look at the spots on Google Maps on one sixty-one, there is, there's no room, you have to hop the curb to get to the spot, basically. And God forbid, somebody accidentally hits the gas pedal, you're going right through the building, or you're going to go running through the sidewalk, perhaps hurting someone. So whether those spots are supposed to be there or not, that's what I'm waiting to see. What is it that we can do to make Mr. Lozara, who lives in Florida, who doesn't come up here? Which is the second business owner, by the way, I'm in touch with, who doesn't live here or come here at all, which probably explains why things look the way they look sometimes around here. What is it that, what's the next step? I just want to know what to do with this.
So if the building department has no record of parking spaces, which...
That was your last email, I believe we discussed this, Mr. Cutino, was that if they, we have no record of it, they could not produce it, my instructions that they round were to prepare to plant trees.
Right, and I know there's something about issuing a violation, because those spots are...
If the spots are contrary to our zoning ordinance, they could be issued a violation, if that's the determination that's made.
Okay.
And if their argument is that they pre-exist our zoning ordinance, which...
They could.
I don't know how old the property is, but that is the case. They would have to apply, so let's say the building department takes the position that they require a variance, and their position is, no, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming condition. The zoning officer could then require them to appear before the board...
For land use board or this, or you guys?
The way.
Okay.
For what they call a zoning certificate. And in order to secure a zoning certificate, they would have to demonstrate to the board that those parking spaces existed prior to any ordinance that restricted or controlled parking spaces. If they're able to produce that, they would be entitled to a zoning certificate.
Great.
If they can't produce that, then they're in violation of the zoning order, if in fact, those parking spaces are in violation. I don't, I'm not familiar enough with your zoning ordinance to know whether they're the right size, whether they're permitted, the locations that they are.
Okay.
So for the purposes of this, let's assume that they're not permitted. If they're not permitted, they'd have to get a variance.
I'd love to get them in front of the land use board. Yeah, right here.
There's no lines for parking.
There is, they do have these lines.
Yeah, it's right by the door.
I don't understand why it's there.
Now, there's lines, but you can see, there's no state, there's no followers, there's no nothing there to protect anyone from.
I don't understand why it's there.
I couldn't tell you.
I noticed that too.
Oh, beautiful, I'll go talk to Mr. Davidson, he's got some mystery on it, so I'll see him. Thank you guys for your help on that, and appreciate it, and thanks again.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to thank Mike Warren, because he did bring complete and green streets policy before us last year, and he actually also made this introduction from, with Christian Noel from Easy Ride, who did that presentation, which really stirred this interest in this policy, so thanks, Mike.
Great. Anyone else, please? Mrs. Verhassel?
Well, I appreciate the thank yous from the committee. I intended to also thank the committee who helped me on this. I also want to thank Michaela, who was a big help. She helped me organize all the flyers, she definitely made all the copies for me, she ordered stuff, so she also deserves her recognition for, you know, a big help. And I know anytime I contact her and say, oh, can we do this or this, she couldn't be more helpful or nicer, so I publicly want to thank you for your help. I know when I thanked her in person, she goes, oh, it's nothing. It is something, because I appreciate it. And again, to thank you to the committee, Tina, Tommy, Chris, Theresa, Mike, and they came and helped without even, you know, we picked a day and they all were like, what time do you want me, so I appreciate it. And we said, we are going to do it again in the fall, so anybody that knows somebody anybody that knows somebody that's moving in, you know, we're not going to like randomly deliver stuff now because it'll just get crazy. So if they give their names, if they call and give it to either Michaela or whoever in the office, we'll make a list.
Mrs. Verhassel, tell everyone here how many bags were made up?
Almost 70.
Right. So that's almost 70 new residents in what, less than a year?
Just under a year.
Just under a year. That's quite a few new residents.
Yes.
And they're very happy to be welcomed with something like that.
And there were a lot of different flyers, so it was a nice combination. We had something from OEM, we had something from the police, the fire, the library. I know I'm leaving something out, but, you know, we had flyers from all the different groups in town.
The calendars, calendars were in there?
The calendars, yes. And we're going to add Gina, unless, however we're going to do it, how to sign up for your, I know it's online, but we figure we'll throw that in there.
Oh, the town.
We're going to put that in the next one. And also, if there's something that Rick wants to add, you know, if, just a general, who to con, because a lot of it, I was thinking more, we don't have to give a lot of information. It should just be more like contact information, like, if you have a question, this is who you should contact. Like, we did something from land use. If you're going to get a permit, this is who you should contact. If you're going to do whatever, you know, this is who you should contact. I mean, the police department did a whole thing because it's different. They have certain things that need to be mentioned. The library mentioned a couple of different things, but, and in department.
So council just said that we should put in mail-in ballots and voter registration and that too. I think Michaela or Gina has something like that, right?
Yeah, because a lot of, a lot of people, when they move within Bergen County, don't understand that they have to re-register. So then, and then when they go to vote, it's too late.
They miss the deadline.
Anything we get, what we did, and they laughed at me when I first told them, but we pretty much set up just a system. We lined everything up, we had the bags, and he just took one and filled it. And, you know, went pretty quickly with everyone's help, so.
That's your scouting, that's your scouting experience.
That must be it. That or my teaching.
And you know what else could be there?
Oh, but I also want to mention, just in our next one, the out-town people offered, they're going to be, they're giving us 40, Michael?
Yes, 40 gift certificates.
Forty gift certificates.
20 or less.
Right, so we're going to be putting them in, which is very nice. Because the first one he offered, I was concerned, and I said, "Oh, maybe you'll only have, you know, five or 10," and I didn't want to get to some and not others. And he said, "No, here's 40." So thank you, Michael.
Well, that's not bad.
Mike spoke to the gentleman, he handed in the picture, and so we appreciate it. And I am going to go to, you know, various businesses in town again. You know, it's good for them. You know, somebody walks in with a certificate for a free soda, they'll buy something with it, or a free whatever, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
So thank you.
Thanks again. And I think that maybe our clerk could also advise where the voting places are, which is one place right now, so.
It's at our senior building, which is located in this building.
But that may also there, because people who are new may not know where to go.
Absolutely. We will include it.
Great. Anyone else in public? All right, here, CNN, I'm sorry. This sound.
Manhattan, West Oldest Street. I have several questions. Rochelle Avenue and the Tyson House and a general statement.
Okay.
Rochelle Avenue was repaved this week, and I thought it was obvious it was organized much better than some previous things that have been done, okay? Well, my question is, is that what the county considers taking care of Rochelle Park on the avenue out of that 10 million?
No.
Completely separate project, Mrs. Cal.
Two different.
We've announced that.
Well, what's going to happen?
In five to six years, it'll all be ripped up and widened.
It's going to be that long before 17 starts?
Correct, yeah, correct.
Most likely.
So this did not come out of that 10 million?
Did not.
I hope I'm here to find out if you're right or wrong.
I know I'm right.
But I won't be. Second question is, what, who owns 49 East Pusseig Street here?
It's a group of investors that the township sold the home to. They're also the owners of a pharmacy, but, yeah.
So good.
If you don't mind.
No, good.
Yes.
It's Invictus Pharmacy that owns.
Oh, their office?
The old Tyson House?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, that's good. A lot of construction and everything, right?
Yeah.
And bonds. I think in the past, we always complained about the amount of bonds that have been issued. You guys have passed a lot of bonds this year already, without counting the pumping station. You know, considering.
I'm trying to think how many.
And now you have two tonight.
There are some for, for the road projects. There had to be one for the roof that had to be done. But by the way, it's coming in almost 500,000 less, so that now takes off from the bond.
Or anticipated.
So that's taking off of the bonds, and why do you have to have these two tonight? Can't you use that 500,000?
No, no, they're designated for certain projects. So of that $800,000 bonded for the roof, the roof bid coming in, just around, you know, just at 300,000 or almost 400,000 or 300,000, just...
Which cost in that one?
That's a half a million dollars that we will never have to actually borrow. So bonds are, it's your authorization to make those purchases. It's not actually borrowing the money.
So when you...
So we have about $1.1 million of debt cancellation that'll be coming off of all of those bonds you're talking about. And then, we have grant money that'll come in and even cancel more of that borrowed debt. So we're actually, we had a meeting with the auditor, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and with the CFO, and it was all explained. You know, we're cognizant of the bonds, and especially because of the pump station. But again, we just received the million dollars, so that, hopefully, we never need to actually fill that bond for the four billion, you know, four and a half million.
I'm going to try to get some more. I'll keep working on seeing.
And listen, the FEMA brick grant I announced back when they yanked it from us, we're still, that may still come back. The Trump administration put everything on hold. It may still come back. We shall see.
We don't know.
We don't know. But right now, it's gone.
Yeah. So basically, with the bonding that we have, it goes, we put this amount of money that's estimated by the engineer of what it's going to cost, right? So say the roof, that was last year, the engineers?
True. Last year was basically, because to do a traditional re-roofing job, we used the state, it was a state contract quote.
Right.
We estimated our bid price.
So that came in a little bit higher. That means we had the bid to say, "Okay, we can spend that money." Doesn't mean we're going to.
Correct.
But it means that we could go up to that. Luckily, our bids come in much lower, even on Howard Avenue. That was just, that came in much lower than was originally bid. So that quote-unquote money-dollar figure that's given in that bid is then retracted or taken back, so it lowers it for what we need to borrow. So when it's all said and done, with all the grants and everything else that might come through to work toward it, I know one of the grants, I believe Mrs. Boniface worked on, Ms. Boniface worked on was, because there was a county park entrance, they could get a grant for Howard Avenue through something with the county on that. I'm trying to remember what it was. This was a while ago.
Parks.
Parks, right?
Yeah, we had all worked on that, the parks.
You all did. I remember telling you that.
Yeah, that was specific to that, and we wanted to take advantage of it.
Right.
For that year, any roads that led to a park entrance.
Great.
So we took advantage of that.
Right, came in.
Right.
So we don't know what's coming up, and we have a company called Millennium that helps us do these bonds.
Oh, one of yours tonight. It's, it's a vague thing, like various computers and workout gear and stuff like that.
So that's our, our capital improvement bond?
Yeah, okay.
Capital improvement.
And, not the capital improvement.
Capital, wait a minute. Isn't it capital improvement bond?
Yes.
Yes. So the capital improvement bond, I sat down with Mr. Miller and the attorney, and the auditor, and the CFO, and the administrator. And just by that one sit-down, we took 100, almost 100,000 off of the original one that was offered. It was already deducted from, by the administrator, and then Mr. Miller and I kind of went in and took a little bit extra off.
You beat me, you beat me up, Mayor.
Yes?
You beat me up.
Well, I, you know, some of these things, there are things that you can do, and some of these are necessary. I mean, there are stuff that...
Oh, and I tell you, they're not necessary.
You know, we have to get a chipper, right? We need a chipper for the wood that has to be picked up, because that chipper's very, very old. But they also need a truck for a plow. Well, maybe we can look at that next year. So these are little things that we say, "Well, maybe we can visit that next year." By the time Mr. Miller and I, and the administrator, and everyone else that was in the room, it was close to almost 100,000 we took off on top of that. But the fire department needs their scuba gear, which, you know, is their Scott Pack kind of thing. And there are things that are necessary. We have rifles for the police department. I don't see, in my opinion, any pork in it that would be considered over, unnecessary, over the amount. Now, also understand that if something comes in a little cheaper than we were looking at for that dollar figure, then that would come off it too, and that would drop it. We're not going over that amount.
Well, when you replace, like, say, your radios, okay, which you want the most, you know, they have to be, you know, updated hours, what do you do with the old ones, Chief?
So I can't, I can speak only to the police department. We haven't traded our radios. These are probably 10 years old. Prior to that, Motorola will tell you there's no use for your old ones. We could try to auction them. We've done that in the past, auction off old equipment. The police department doesn't do a radio replacement program but for maybe every 10 to 12 years. The fire department does. They perpetually buy five new radios to outfit their members, and that's part of this program. The old ones, if there's a value to them and somebody wants to buy them, they'll get auctioned off. If Motorola or the manufacturer of the radio is willing to take in a trade in, and that's what we're doing with the rifle gear, we're trading in old rifle gear to get new gear. I did that with the old tasers. We traded, traded in our old tasers. So those options are all looked at. I can tell you, Mr. Davidson was probably, you know, when I first became chief, I think it was, he said to me, "We need to do an auction. We haven't done one here in many years." And together with the police department, the administrative office, we started doing auctions. I've done one every two years for those types of items, and that goes back into Murrin. It goes back to municipal revenue not anticipated. They don't just sit around, they don't, you know, but not always is there a market for the older radio equipment.
One last question. Jennifer, how many children signed up for daycare, uh, days, they can't?
How many? Thirty-two.
It ended up being 31.
Thirty-two. I was there two days ago. There was less.
That's right, the one, one out of three kids.
All from Rochelle Park or Saddle? Saddle Brook. About how many from Saddle Brook?
A handful.
Not a lot. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Warren? No, that's fine. Come on up.
Mr. Pinter said something, I just want to, that those, that federal grants on hold.
Well, I'll explain if you, so the FEMA brick grant, we were advised by the New Jersey Office of Emergency Management, based on the Trump administration under Elon Musk at the time, they were decimating the brick grant program. That's where we were awarded that money from. They said, "If you have not already received funding, act as though it doesn't exist." And that's the current, is Pete's...
Has not changed.
Pete, that has not changed, correct? I know the OEM offices have been involved. So we're basically told it's gone. However, should it come back, that's, let's that move on for, right?
Can I make a suggestion? Gail, Jen, please write the president a personal letter.
I, listen, I think you should pass a resolution.
I'm not joking.
Pass a resolution.
Pass a resolution, put it in the letter.
Send it to the White House.
Please tell him that his constituents, the people who support him, his voters, are being hurt by this grant being taken away. He seems like the kind of guy that likes to help out the people who like him and support him. You two should write him a letter, a personal letter, to help make your job easier for your constituents who voted for him to get this grant. I'm not lying. I think you should give it a shot.
Thank you. If you get an answer, let me know. That would be interesting. That would be very, you know, hey, I'll write a letter, but you won't like when I write it. And anybody else for the public?
No.
All right. Hearing or seeing no one, may I have a motion to close the public, please?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second? Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Carvello?
Yes. All right, so we have an introduction of ordinances here. This is ordinance 1241-25, 1242-25, and 1243-25. These are all the bond ordinance that we're talking about. Thank you, gentlemen. I just need a motion to move these. May I have a motion for moving these bond ordinances? May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Carvello?
Yes, thank you. All right, would you read the notice, please?
Yes. So the public is aware, the committee just motioned and second to move three ordinances in total, 1241-25, 1242-25, and 1243-25. Notice is hereby given that these ordinances were introduced and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Committee of Rochelle Park held today, July 23rd, and ordered published in accordance with the law. Said ordinances will be considered for final reading and adoption at a meeting held on August 27th at 5:00 PM in the Township of Rochelle Park Municipal Building, at which time all persons interested will be given an opportunity to be heard concerning such ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Jen. All right, so now we have the adoption of these ordinances that are 1239-25 and 1240-25. We need to open to the public, we need to open to the public. May I have a motion to open to the public on these two ordinances, please?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Carvello?
Yes. So it's open to the public if there's any questions on these two, which is the current regulation and the Township, we're committed on the, to adopt the bond ordinance to authorize undertaking various improvements at Corlock Field. Anyone here have any questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Carvello?
Yes. All right, so the ordinance 1239-25, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Carvello?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 1240-25, may I have a motion for this ordinance? This is the bond authorization on taking various improvements to Corlock Field. May I have a motion to move, to adopt this ordinance?
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Committeewoman Apici?
Yes.
Committeewoman Artola?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Mayor George Carvello?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to the 10% agenda, and remember on this also we added Resolution 25-219, which is the settlement agreement or the agreement resolution here for talkroom. All right, we all have that, copy of that. Before we do that, I'd like to mention a couple of things. I see on here that we are actually going to authorize hire an unpaid intern for the police department. Chief, would you like to speak about that?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was talking with the deputy clerk. Where were you at?
The unpaid.
Oh, so, yes, so I'm happy and pleased. This young gentleman came to us through one of our part-time workers here in the municipal court. She stated her son was a criminal justice as well as a computer major at Rutgers University. He was very interested in doing an unpaid internship while he attends Rutgers. While he's a full-time student, he commutes to New Brunswick. But he, so he is home in the, this area often enough to come into the office and help out. His IT technology is really what we're tapping into while giving him the opportunity to supplement his criminal justice studies. He'll be able to help us learn and do some of our records work. Our current, you know, confidential assistant records clerk is out on maternity leave, so he'll help fill a void there. And we plan on, you know, training him up through the detective bureau, how they fulfill discovery requests, as well as learn a little bit about our dispatch operations in the event after college. He's looking for some premium dispatch work. We'll have somebody that's trained up, and it comes at no cost to the township.
Thank you. Also, we have Officer Lamas being moved out.
Can we believe it's one year already?
I can't believe it's happened. That's your permanent status as our police officer.
Correct. Officer Lamas continues to do a fantastic job. He, you know, I spoke about Officer Kiska being the leader of the pack. Officer Lamas is the close second. They work together, so they do chase each other around, seeing who can write the most tickets, make the most arrests, and attend the pride events as well, because they're, they are about community.
I've seen many, many events, and not only that, but a lot of our officers.
Correct. And they're, both those, I don't want to say where they're, but they are residents of the township, which is awesome.
And also on this resolution, which is 25-209, it's a war contract for Howard Avenue rapid rectangular flashing beacon installation. Would you like to explain that?
Yes, the mayor came to me and said, "You know, Dean, while we're doing all this work on Howard Avenue, we do have, you know, an issue with traffic calming needs and then speed mitigation, as well as the, you know, entrance to one of the larger county park systems in Bergen County, if not New Jersey, right there at Howard and Meakin. What would